Victor and Stephen, that it had been, we've had some pretty good responses today. Had a, had a really good athlete with solid GPA and also really good stats.
Three sevens is a little better than a solid GPA, Dave.
Yeah, it's a good, it's good. So those are good. And you know, we've seen an uptick in inquiries. And I was just commending Victor and Stephen about the, the job their faculty is doing resonating with our community. That people are starting to hear, there's a buzz about the high quality distance learning that's happened here. So I think that's all, that's all been really positive. And I think people are looking forward to seeing what's going to be happening come the fall. And it's nice to see that, you know, we're progressing along with good planning.
Oh, we're up to 30 participants. So we've kind of hit the magic, the magic number. So I'd like to say hello to everyone who has, has joined us. And, and you know, it seems like forever that we had our first town hall back in the sort of the dog days of, of beginning this, this sort of distance learning adventure. And, and so I think it was actually warmer and sunnier back then than it is right now. Certainly sunnier than it is today. But again, I appreciate you coming in and I'll point out that at the bottom of your screen is a, is a little chat bubble. And if you click on that, you will be able to type in any questions you might have and they'll come up on our screen so that we can answer them as we, as we go, as we go through this. But I guess the, my, my, my primary reason for, for trying to get in touch with everybody to answer questions is largely has to do with, with sort of re-enrollment or reopening scenarios going forward. I know that it's, it's, the great unknown is probably the most difficult part of, of this pandemic. We have no idea what the future holds for us. So with that as kind of an opening caveat, we're doing our best to plan for as many eventualities as possible, knowing that whatever, whatever reality actually occurs, we can take our planning and adjust it to fit that specific situation. So we're trying to, yeah, I beg your pardon. I said chat and it's the question and answer. It's a question and answer button is the one to, to be clicking on, not the chat. If you chat, you won't be able to find anybody. So Q and A bubble, not the chat. So let me just kind of reiterate some of the things that I mentioned in the, in the letter. We, I think have proven through the spring that we're capable of, of transitioning into a pretty effective distance learning program. And I do deeply appreciate all the positive feedback we received on that. I tell you, it, it means a lot to, to the faculty to, to hear these things. So as I said, it's, it's nice when you're doing something that you're not certain of to hear from somebody that your efforts are being successful or at least being rewarded. So I do appreciate that on behalf of all the folks that have worked so hard. But you know, we look at where we're headed in, in September and it's a, it's become quite apparent that the chances of us stopping norm, reopening the school year in a normal setting with everything exactly the way it was in, in February is, is probably not likely to happen. What's, I don't think is likely to happen. We're going to have some sort of, of change. And really the, the changes are going to be some mix of having people on our campus in a social distancing posture and als, and/or having continued distance learning. I will say that we will, just like a snow day, we will be as aggressive as we can, as aggressive as prudent to have kids on our campus and to have school be as normal as, as possible. I'm predisposed that way. And, and so barring, you know, local or state government preventing us from doing something or the advice of, of medical experts, those are the things that will, will cause us to not be able to come back on campus in some form. So my goal is to, is to be back on campus so long as it's safe. And, and I think it's the most effective way. So that's where I start all of the, all of these things from. So with that, I've got a question. Oh, it's good. Just another, another very kind comment. Thank you for that. But so really probably the one that most people have questions on or, or, or wonder about is this concept of social distancing on, on campus. Right now, for instance, if you're in a restaurant, you're, you're allowed to have certain people come to your restaurant for cer, with certain constraints. It's a certain percentage of tables that you can use, a certain minimum distance between tables. You have to be outside rather than inside. These types of things are all social distancing parameters that are put on a business. My guess is we will get very specific parameters recommended to us as well when we open. From really a number of conversations with folks that, that I respect their, their, their knowledge base. It appears that we're headed towards a possible 10 person limit in each classroom. Should be nine students and a teacher. And so with that as kind of the beginning, we've looked at what can we do on our campus to spread our students out? And it's not just as simple as nine kids in a classroom. It, it also means how do you get kids on and off campus in the, in the morning and the afternoon? What do you do for extended day? What do you do for, you know, large group gatherings that you traditionally have? What do you do for lunch room? Obviously athletics, you know, the band, things like this, we're all, all have to have answers created, designed to keep a limited number of, of people in one space. We feel like we have the, a strong beginning of an understanding about how we can, from age, three years of age through seventh grade, we can teach school on our campus in, in classrooms, no larger than nine people per classroom for, with one, with one adult. And, and then from eighth grade through 12th grade, we would have to switch to a, a sort of a shift where we would have a group of students that would come from on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday. And then the other group would come in on Tuesday, Thursday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And when they're not on campus, they would be receiving distance learning. A little bit different than what we're doing right now. Basically it'd be a camera in the back of the classroom so that you would feel like you're sitting in the classroom as the teacher is teaching the kids who happen to be on campus that day. And through this, we'd be able to create a structure on campus so that we'd have half the kids on campus or half the number of kids in a classroom at, at any one time. There are a lot of things that go along with this. One of those things is, do you go to masks for kids? Do you go to masks for faculty and staff? These types of things, which we haven't, we haven't come up with the answer to that. But we would do what we think is, is best recognizing that masks on a four-year-old are probably not a very effective thing. And, and also social distancing for three and four-year-olds is very different than asking 11th and 12th graders to social distancing. So we have some things like, like that as, as well. We have a team of faculty and staff that are, that are looking at that, working their way through all those aspects. And we also have a second team that is really mostly focusing on the medical side of things. Questions such as, in the inevitable case of a coronavirus on our campus, either faculty, staff or student or family of a student, how do we respond as an institution to that? The issue of sanitizing classrooms, how do we, are there some things we can do to make sure the classrooms are safer or more effectively clean? Issues such as masks or as we talked today, face shields are slightly more expensive. It's basically a Velcro strap around the head with a, with a plastic shield in front. It's easier for kids to wear. It's more comfortable and it also allows people to see facial expressions. So it might be more effective to use those even if they are slightly more expensive. So we have another group that's really looking at the medical aspects of this. What do we do in terms of when kids come on campus? How do we determine whether it's safe for a kid? How do we determine what, what outsiders are allowed on campus, those types of things? So we have a second group looking at that. So we've been busy and, and I feel like we've got, we've got a good start on that. You know, there's a question about international students. Again, many of our international students are not going home for the summer. They will be, they're staying with family, friends or friends here in the United States. So I would imagine that they will return to school just like anybody else. Folks that have gone home either to Germany or Spain or Vietnam or China, I don't know whether or not they'll be able to return to the United States initially. But let's suppose that they are. One of the things that we will be looking at would be a mandatory 14-day quarantine for these students in order to make sure that they're, they're not carrying the coronavirus when they come back in. And again, we'll follow government recommendations, you know, as that, as that opens up. But as I said, you know, it's a, it's something we have to look at. Right now, the US has more cases of coronavirus than anywhere else. So we're just as liable to get coronavirus from one of our families as we would be from an international family. But we'll do what we think is, is safest on, on that. Right now, the medical group that we're putting together is Michael Jeremiah, who is at Carillion Hospital and Pam Haskins, our school nurse. And then folks that are involved with keeping the, keeping the campus clean. For instance, today we talked about both face shields as well as electrostatic disinfectants that fog a, fog classrooms with a negatively charged disinfectant, which spreads out and clings to the positive ions and everything that's in the room, allowing a much more effective disinfectant of all surfaces and all crevices, things like that. So there's also a, a cleanliness thing on that. So. As I said, with respect to face shields, as I said, it's, it was brought up today. I don't even know the cost of them. And again, the, the other, the other question is, is, you know, will they be required? I don't know whether they'll be required or not by, by the time we get to September 8.
And one of, one of the people that we talked to also, like this came up in the context of teachers and the importance of facial cues to instruct particularly the younger students. And the worry was with a, with a, with a mask on the face, a lot of the visual cues weren't there that would help learning. So as an alternative, a face shield was recommended, but mostly for the teachers, thinking about what teachers would be experiencing. So I think that was another reason that face shields came up versus masks. So continuing to follow discussions as well as, you know, regulations.
I've never worn either, but I was also told by, by Pam that, that a shield is more comfortable. If you wear a mask for eight hours a day, you're not used to it. You're more likely to actually do stuff that's negative because your hands are going to your face more often because you're adjusting the mask. Whereas professionals are used to doing that and they, they basically don't, don't go to their face to, to, to do masks. So you know, something else that you have to look at for children, which is, is are you actually doing something that promotes an unsafe practice as opposed to, to a, to a regular practice as well? Got a question about reopening in sports teams. You know, right now, we, I, I mean, I, it just killed me to, to lose the spring athletic season as, as competitive as I am. But right now, it'll be interesting to see what our, our organization recommends. VISA, they're not the most responsive organization in the world by, by nature. And, but my guess is that they'll probably follow along with what VHSL recommends. I think the key on that is there's differences between cross-country and, and football. There's differences between tennis and, and soccer. So you know, whether it's, some sports go and some sports don't. I mean, my, my hope is that we can get a season in with all, with all sports. So we'll, if we're on campus, our goal is to try and do everything we possibly can to have it as normal as, as we can. Now whether or not that means, you know, some sports, you know, we're not allowed to do that. Well, then we'll, we'll go with that. But I hope we can, we can do it all.
And Blair Trail this morning, started the morning with Blair Trail and all of her coaches. And this was an opportunity to talk about a number of things. And one of the ones that came up was, it seems to be there's a relaxing of some of the restrictions that there is the, you know, the rule of 10 is going to apply, but they're now allowing athletic get-togethers and, you know, encouraging safety during, during that period of time. But I know that Ed Dickinson, for example, with his cross-country folks was planning on starting some cross-country practices. I, I think those kinds of things, we're going to see a little bit more of that loosen up according to what Blair was sharing with her coaches. So there's still optimism, you know, on, on our end.
Yeah, I got a question on, about daily attendance. Certainly daily attendance is, is preferable. There's no doubt about that. Which is why we've, we've figured out a way for ECP to seventh grade to do daily attendance turn to regular school thing. The idea of having a morning shift and an afternoon shift rather than every other day shift. Problem with that is that the teachers would have to teach each class twice. So they'd be teaching eight classes a day or 10 classes a day, depending on their regular course load being four or five classes. So I don't know that, I don't know that as a long-term solution, it would, it would work. It would work because I think it would wear the teachers out pretty, pretty quickly. And you know, there's another, another aspect, which is something that's been brought up. Right now, we're still thinking every other day, but, but this is one that came up. And there was an interesting article came out of the university in, in Israel. And it's based on the, the knowledge of, of the, of the incubation period for the virus. They said, you're better off teaching every other week. Because that way you have four days on and 10 days off. You've got a two-week, two-week period. And so it allows you to determine who, but when you start each week, you're determining who's actually, you'll already know anybody who's, who's, who is, has the disease. So they were, they were recommending even for businesses going with four days on, 10 days off. But this is, I think right now, where we're really working is on the every other day. And that at least gives kids some time during the week when they're actually in a classroom with their teacher, being able to, to ask and get that, that face-to-face interaction. The, you know, with respect, somebody was talking about phase two, phase three. If phase three, you know, I would imagine that would be a situation where school would resume as normal. And, you know, so if we can get there, then, then I think we would just be in a traditional school day and everything would go as normal. We would do the smart things in terms of, of making sure we, we clean classrooms and, and do all the hand sanitizer and those kinds of things. And, and beg parents not to send kids with any, any sniffles or, or things to school until they're healthy. I think we would go ahead. Phase two, I think probably, phase two still has some, some number restrictions in terms of classroom restrictions, I think. You know, there's a question about starting in September or October. We can't start early because we've got construction going on. And so the September 8th date, that, that Tuesday after Labor Day was always going to be our start date. But let's suppose we get to September and either public schools are in distance learning still and, or, or schools are being recommended to be in distance learning. The question then comes is, is there a likelihood that in October we'll be back in class? And, or does it look like we're going to be in distance learning until, you know, February? But one of the responses we can make to that would be to delay the beginning of school until October and go a month later in June of next, of the following summer. And still have a complete school year and have more of the school year being normal or, or on campus rather than distance learning. This is a possibility. Now, there are some issues with APs. So the APs may have to start, you know, in September to be able to get the, the content completed by, by the time the AP exams are in, in, in late April or early May. So that would be something we'd have to work through. But there's a very good possibility that if we were to be required to open in September on the distance learning, we, we might hold off until, until October so we can go to school as much as possible in, in class. And again, it means we lose June of the following summer. But as I said, it would be a long summer and a short summer.
And I think one of the things that, that I consistently hear is that we're trying to accomplish our planned year's curriculum in total and not scaling back what we had hoped to accomplish. And I think that's been a distinguishing factor in the way we've been attacking our distance learning in our school year.
Yeah, exactly. You know, again, there's a question talking about, you know, if 80% of the country becomes infected, at what point does it make sense to oppose all these strategies? You know, those are, those are questions that I'm going to have to probably leave and listen to, to, you know, the experts. I mean, as an uninformed person, obviously if 80% of the country has become affect, infected, then what, what good does it really have worrying about people getting infected? I mean, you know, everybody's infected already. So, you know, ideas of herd, herd immunity, those types of things, you know, should they become? Should they, should they become proven or identified? Then, then those are all kinds of things that we'll have to, have to, to look at. Right now, the standards that we're following, that we're, we're most concerned with is, let's suppose we do open in a, in a, in a traditional on-campus format. And inevitably somebody's going to become sick. I mean, just, I mean, someone's going to get the flu next year as well. Not to equate the two, but, but kids get it sick and if the coronavirus is out there, somebody's going to get sick. Really what I'm looking for is what is the standard that will kick us from, from regular on-campus learning into a distance learning format? Will one kid showing up on campus or one parent getting sick of a kid who's coming here? Or one faculty member getting sick, does that throw us into a, a, a distance learning format? And, and you know, that, and if you look at this according to, again, Dr. Jeremiah, the safest thing you can do, if one person gets sick, you shut down for two weeks. That is, you know, probably not a workable solution. And so for instance, in the hospital right now, if they have three people on one ward that gets sick, they shut the ward down for 14 days. So three people is the trigger at, at, at Carillion right now. One of the things that just Victor and I were just talking about is, to the extent that we social distance on campus, can we also divide the campus into groups that are relatively isolated? So if we get one or two people that is, that, that show up coronavirus positive, can we shut down a portion of the school, go distance learning for, for a portion of the school? Whereas the rest of the school continues on in, in an on-campus format. So those are the kinds of things that we're also looking at trying to do to, to again, keep us on campus as much as, as possible. I mean, obviously the easy distinctions are Ellis E., Willis Hall, you know, lower middle and upper school. And to, so you can keep them isolated. You know, then the question is, can you break, can you break, you know, Ellis down into ECP? Grades one through three, grades four through seven, grades eight through 12. To what extent can you, can you do that kind of stuff? So, you know, those are all questions that we have to answer. Some are easier than others. But so our, our biggest metric that we're trying to find out right now is how do we respond to that? You know, going forward. You know, hopefully one of two things will happen, you know, we'll, we'll be, we'll have a significant portion of the folks will already prove to have been, you know, have been exposed and they'll have antibodies. And, and that's an effective prevention. Or on the other hand, maybe the number, the percentage of people that, that have the virus is so low that we're able to get by with one or two turning up, turning up positive. Some information I can tell you that I got today, that Carillion has, has testing available for anybody that has symptoms. And that test is, it's, I got a 24-hour return time. And so if you do start to get fever or cough or shorten some breath, any of the things that are the symptoms, you go to the velocity care or something like that. And they, they will recommend you go to their testing place. And they're doing about 100 tests a day right now for people who show up with, with symptoms. And they're getting about a 4%, a 4% positive response in terms of people who test positive for, for the coronavirus. So you compare that to Northern Virginia, which is running around 25% of all tests are positive in Northern Virginia. So that's just another, another thing that as long as we're running around 4%, that speaks well for our ability to reopen in a more normal fashion. It's one of the, the measures that they're looking at. Again, a lot of that has to do with, we have to look at our situation differently than situations in Northern Virginia, the Tidewater area. And so we'll continue to do, to do that as, as well. Yeah, like somebody's broad incoherency of, about the virus and measure to, yeah. And that's one of the things that we're really wrestling with is, is there are so many things still unknown. So many things that people think about the disease. We haven't even gotten, you know, the mortality rate really isolated because we don't know how many people actually have had the disease. Because so many people are asymptomatic. I mean, there was a study in LA that showed 48% of the people in LA were estimated to, to have been exposed and have antibodies. So I mean, you know, these are all kinds of things that are slowly kind of become aware. And certainly we'll know a lot more by, by the late summer than we do right now. Outdoor space for instruction, certainly, yeah. To the extent that we can go outdoors for instruction, there is a significant difference between. To the extent that we can go outdoors for instruction, there is a significant difference between indoor and outdoor environments. In fact, if you were to design a, a, an environment to produce spread of the virus, it would be indoors with lots of people for an extended period of time, which pretty much describes a classroom. So to the extent we can go outdoor, that's great. And we've talked about getting filters for the HVAC that have a micron efficiency that will cut out a lot of these things. We've also talked about, do we turn the HVAC off and go with opening windows and fans? And there's some work being done right now on if, the, the role of HVAC systems and spreading this. But definitely, you know, outside is, is something. We're really using every space on campus with the model we have. You know, the, the racquetball courts and spreading people out within the CAC, utilizing the dance room in the CAC, utilizing all the classroom space we have available for us in terms of multipurpose rooms, computer labs, really trying to spread people out. Because again, you have to have something ultimately that's effective when you, even in inclement weather or in this case, very hot weather. So we'll, yeah, definitely outside to be by far the, the best. And, you know, do you, can you do a large group thing where you put some X's on the floor and in the, in the CAC? And you use the entire CAC to spread out a whole division? I, you know, I don't know. Question then is, are you just even more effective doing it via, by Zoom? Than, than speaking to a CAC-sized space full of, full of people? The school will be alternating days or block schedule with material covered be reduced? No, we've actually worked, we've actually worked very hard to make sure that we continue to offer the same, the same amount of coverage. Obviously sequential courses such as mathematics and foreign language are more, more curriculum sensitive than, say, English in terms of, it's, it's not really what you're learning in the, in the book. It's, it's, are you developing the skills to understand what's, what's written in the book? And are you developing the writing skills to be able to do that? So, so certainly we've done a good job, I think, of keeping the pace. But I do think that being on campus is at least half the time is more effective at, at, at being able to keep the, keep the content that, that go. And so, yeah, I mean, the, the, can we, if we don't physically open early, like in September, can we open distance classes for certain classes? They will fall behind. That's exactly what we would have to do, would be to go to distance learning early. And again, particularly those classes that are, that are, have an outside curriculum, such as an AP-based or sequential class. for lower school, if parents are literally having the children back on campus, yes, I mean, we, I think would probably try to do the best we could to always maintain a distance learning option at the same time operating in classes to the best we possibly can. It would only be prudent because it places us in a good situation so that if we're forced to shift one way or the other, we're already doing it. So it just, it, it would be an easy transition. I think the, it makes sense in fourth grade through 12th grade because it's easier for those kids to have, I think, a good distance learning scenario. I've been amazed at what some of our, our ECP and lower primary teachers have done in the way of using Loom videos and coming up with innovative ways to get kids excited about stuff. It's been incredible to watch. Might be a little harder for those teachers to teach a regular class and to be able to deal with, with distance learning. But we would still try and do it for every grade, yes. Where's a little different question, construction progressing? I, I, probably the biggest thing that's going on right now will be, reside the fact that we're in a giant sea of mud. The front portion of the school has been, they've peeled back all the asphalt and the curbs and they're getting ready to lay in the new, new curbing and sort of traffic circle up front and those types of things. So we're going to actually get some parking lots and curbs and stuff built here soon. But everything's going on, on target. Our, our builders have done a great job of having hand washing stations and sanitizing stations and the, the, wearing masks on the construction site. They're very concerned about this and, and, but we, we haven't had any outbreaks on the job. I think we're going to be finishing the upper school early. It'll probably be done the end of July, which gives us a nice, a nice four or five weeks to be able to get the teachers to gradually move in as they, as they feel comfortable moving in. So I feel like everything's, everything's going well. The brick fireplace is, is now in place in, in the student, the student center. They're, they're putting the, the suspended ceilings and lights in right now and in, in most of it. Crosswalk is completely framed in. And, you know, everything is roofed in, it's going to be roofed in. They, today they were working on the extended stage. So the stage is, is being built out to a much larger size. So they were doing that because it was an indoor, indoor job. So it's, um, it continues to go, well, even in the rain, there were probably 30 people working on campus today. So that's pretty, pretty neat. The upper school looks very different. It's just, it's, it's strange because you can't, you forget that there used to be a commu-, a commons area in the middle. Because now it's just a classroom and the, and the boiler room is just a classroom now. And, and everything's very, very different. So it'll be fun seeing everybody's faces when they get back on campus for the first time, the kids get a chance to walk the hallways. I think we need to have some cameras, just, it's going to be kind of like, you know, when they do the big reveal and flipping houses or whatever, and somebody comes in and says, "Oh my gosh." It's going to be like that.
One of the things that I wanted to add is, you know, outside of the being here on campus every day and seeing, seeing all that's taking place, it's going to be exciting when it reopens. Going back to some of the things that we're learning, I, I appreciate the fact that the people in these teams that have been in place are being very measured about what their, what their plans are. Right now, we're taking in a lot of information that's coming out on a daily basis and kind of putting that into consideration as we develop what our plans are. You know, as a parent, I get a lot of stuff from UVA, giving us the latest things on what's going on at UVA. And also from James Madison. We're fortunate to have a board member from Holland. So we get a lot of information from people. And that's in addition to everything that you catch on news and professional organizations. So I really do appreciate that we're taking time to be very thoughtful. And also things are changing on such a regular basis. So, you know, it's nice to see that we're considering all that.
Yeah, our value, I mean, the thing is, part of what we're trying to do is show you the thoughts that we're going through. And, and, but the, but the biggest thing, the biggest takeaway has to be that our, our primary focus is we would like to get everybody back on campus in, in developing, continue to develop those relationships with our teachers, personal relationships, not relationships via, via Loom video or Zoom screen. So that's our, our primary focus. To the extent that we can do that safely, that is our, that is our goal. And somebody said, what if somebody shows up on campus positive? That's one of the things that we're, we're, we're doing is, if somebody shows up positive and things like when kids come on campus, the, the parents have to have asked, asking parents a certain checklist of things that you, you see, if you've been to the doctor now, they say, have you had any fever? Have you been a cough? Have you had any? And, and, and those types of questions, have you traveled anywhere? Being able to take temperatures to the extent that that helps people who are, find, determine people are symptomatic. These are the types of things, but, and if anybody answers yes to one of those questions or, or tests symptomatic, then we'll ask, let them stay home until they can do that, or if the symptoms are bad enough, send them to a velocity care to get a test. So, you know, there is good progress being made in the Roanoke Valley with respect to our ability to test people. And VTCRI has, has worked hard, they're doing most of the testing in the valley right now. Carillion is very aggressively ramping up their, their ability to test large numbers of people. Dr. Jeremiah has said that to the extent that we can have a number of tests for, for North Cross, you know, he would make sure that we can, we can get them. But again, you have people like Virginia Tech that want to test all 35,000 students on the way in. So, so there has to be a process in place to get people tested if they're symptomatic and to remove them from that. There also has to be our version of contact tracing. So if somebody is symptomatic, we have to be able to say, who, who are the people that have been with this person? And send them home as well. That's why I say we can divide the school into, into more isolated groups. It makes the contact tracing that much easier in that you know that this group of people haven't had any impact with somebody that's in this, in this group. And so that's something we have to try to, try to do. Somebody's apologizing for being speculative. You don't have to apologize for being speculative. You know, in a sense, that's what we are all doing is we are speculating about what the future is going to, to bring. And, and, you know, if a bunch of kids get sick, essentially you probably are going to shut down and go to distance learning because you will want to keep the hotspot from, from going. And probably that, that shutdown would be 14 days until you have everybody on your campuses either symptomatic or, or has, or is asymptomatic. So, yeah, that's what we would do. The question is, is how big is a bunch of kids? Is two kids a bunch of kids? Or is two kids, if we feel like we can isolate, you know, they were relatively isolated and we can determine who, who are they around, is, is that it? You know, right now, if you'd asked me if we had not stopped school when the governor shut us down back that second week in March, part of me says we probably could have gone most of the spring without, and still had regular school. Now, again, you don't know, but, you know, we haven't had, we haven't been hit that heavily in the, in the valley. We've been very fortunate. Or maybe the reason we haven't been hit is because we did shut down. I don't know, but, you know, part of me says that we might have been able to get through the spring. So as I said, we just, we all speculate on, on what might, what might happen. And, and as I said, I'm, well, I want to have, prior to opening up, is I want to have a sort of a, a, a pre-thought-out response to that inevitability that somebody has the coronavirus. So I want to know exactly how we're going to respond, given one kid, two kids, three kids, you know, a couple of faculty members, kids in one area, not another area. So I want to try to pre-think as many of those responses as we possibly, as we possibly can. It says, if school will be alternating days or block schedule with material cover be reduced, would there be an adjustment to longer school time? So kids won't be behind a lot of content to be taught? I, I think, again, on alternating days, I, I really don't have any, any doubt that the pace and coverage of the class would be very similar to being in class every day.
Yeah, if I can jump in, yeah, yeah. I can jump real quick. Our goal on this committee, this reopening committee, if we have to do this scenario that we're talking about, the one teacher to nine, um, our goal is to keep the instruction going at the same, at the same pace. Obviously, we'd adjust as we have done during this distance learning era. But, but if we're coming back to school, all, I mean, in the scenario where up to grade seven, kids are coming every day, our students are coming every day, our goal is to continue the pace of the curriculum. And in the eighth, and Stephen, if you want to, I mean, if you have something different, in the eighth through 12th, on the day that, if, if we're doing this alternating day, if a student is at home, they will be attending. They will be attending school and, and the, and the curriculum, I mean, the, the lessons, like I teach an AP class, World History, for example, we'd be, we, we'd still be covering, we'd be going, as if, we'd be acting as if the students were physically there and we'd do everything we could to have them attend via Zoom and other platforms to make sure that they're, they're dialed in. And when they came back to school the next day, you know, it would keep progressing.
It's not, if we were to have to split days, it wouldn't be distance learning like what you're seeing right now. Literally, it would be a camera in the back of the class. And so the kids at home would be sitting in the back row. And they would, they would get, they would get the same thing that the kids in the class are getting. The teacher would have the, the pictures. If a kid's, you know, raised their hand, they click on that, just the same way they would ask a question to somebody in the classroom. So if we were to do this every other day thing, it would be synchronous. In other words, your child that's at home is going through the exact same thing that the people in the classroom are going through. It's not a situation where you have four days a week with a lot more of this, of the stuff being done outside the classroom because of the, of the intense deprivation that you get from being in front of a ski, a screen for, for seven hours. So it would, it would be much more like a traditional classroom just being presented on, online.
One of the things that we are in the process of building right now is a survey that's going to go out to parents. It will give parents an opportunity to give suggestions, give feedback. And I will say that one of the things I've really appreciated is, you know, every time we've talked about this internally with our different teams and, you know, as members of senior staff, the one thing that always guides us is things that you say pretty regularly. How can we make sure that the education that we're delivering is the absolute best that we can do? And certainly the absolute best that can be done anywhere in our region. So I think when that's the vision that we start out with, everything seems to track according to that. We don't negate, you know, safety considerations and things like that. I think the vision is, how do we do this as best we can? And, and I would say that in admission, you know, I just think about my admission team and what we're doing now. We're only gaining advantages from having been in a distance learning environment. There are new tools that we're using, new techniques that we're using. And I don't think we're ever going to go back to the way it used to be. And I hear teachers saying that this has been a really good thing. And I hear students saying, it's been a great skill to learn.
We have talked about the presence of, of cameras in classrooms. And obviously, right now, we're talking about it to be able to, to toggle back and forth from, from the distance learning to regular learning. But the reality is, you know, let's suppose you're in a classroom where your child is, is, misses two periods because they've got to go to Richmond for a, you know, a field hockey game. Well, they can, those classes can be recorded and, and they can come back and watch those classes to see exactly what they missed. So there's a variety of positives that can come out of setting these cameras up in, in, in the classrooms. That may be one of the, you know, some positive things that will take out of this experience, I think. And certainly the use of video in welcoming new, new applicants to the school. has been something that's proven to be really, I think, exceptional on the admissions, the admissions side. So a question about the CAC, you know, there were questions about the CAC even before the coronavirus hit. And, and I don't think it's a secret that we've been examining different ways of, of operating the CAC in, in, in ways that, that are more beneficial to the, to the school and less imposing, less impositional on the school. I do think though, that it's a very real concern, which is that we, for those of you who don't know, we have a very elderly component to, to the CAC membership. And a lot of them are Silver Sneakers, which is a little slightly different program than a traditional CAC membership. I, I think probably, I, I don't know that we'll be going back in that direction. This is a no, no ifs, ands, or buts, but it's, it's tough having 75-year-old, 80-year-olds coming on campus during the middle of a COVID virus. And the other thing is the degree with which we'd have to sanitize and take care of, of the facilities to make it safe is a, is a completely different, completely different thing. We are for sure, we are allowing the Marlins, which is our swim program, to move to be independently operated. So it will no longer be a North Cross-owned swim team. Starting in September, they will be their own 501(c)(3) organization and they'll take care of all of their, their, their billing and their coaching and things like that. So we are also working actively with them over the summer in terms of how do you deal with swimming pools and, and these types of things. To this date, right now, the CAC remains closed. We have opened the campus back up for people who want to use the tennis courts for outside pickleball or for tennis. And so we have seen a few people coming back on campus, but the CAC remains closed and probably will until, until the fall.
If I may address a question, Stephen can jump in as well. There's been a few teachers that have retired and maternity, and also we have, you know, we're going to be more of a two-tier school division. Next year, of course, I will assume, Stephen will assume the role of upper school director, and I will assume the role of lower school, in the sense of having a lower and an upper school. You'll still have our three buildings, of course, Ellis Eaton and Willis. And will we know which teachers will be teaching classes for those teachers left on maternity leave? Or how the two-tier system will affect especially the eighth and ninth graders? Or this won't be decided till a close opening day? No, we're already, we're already dialing down and deciding those things now. So, you know, we're trying to, trying to finish this year well, right? You know, tomorrow and Friday and then, and the report cards. And then we should actually have that information coming out very soon as well in June with letters from me and from Stephen.
I can't give a sneak, a sneak preview. And largely what we're doing, because we're kind of dividing the middle school from an instructional standpoint, if not necessarily from a, from a social standpoint, we are looking at, we have two teachers that will be teaching more so in the upper school than, than the lower schools in the past. And that will be Ryan Cook and Robin Garrett will be teaching up. And, and then one teacher in the middle school will be doing a little work in fourth and fifth grade, and that will be Shelley Basile. So those are two, those are three faculty members who are seeing some of those things done. But the reality is, most everything else is pretty, pretty much the, the same, will be pretty consistent with what we see this year.
And with regards to maternity, if you're speaking of, we have some two very good and tantalizing possibilities of people we've been talking to about the choral, you know, the choral director position and the Spring Musical, which will make a roaring comeback in the spring. But yes, we're, we're dialing down on that as well. I'll let Stephen add, and I'll really quickly address one other question. I guess Stephen got, David and myself got complimented on our beards. And then one, there's one person here does, does not fit this picture. Thank you. Beard was looking a lot, it was looking very scraggly until I think one of my AP World students said something, and my wife as well. And so, you know, I started to dial down on it, but again, that information.
You can go ahead and tell them that one of your students called you Rasputin.
Well, we cover Rasputin, AP World History, and I, it's a, it's a great story, so I really, I drag it out.
We got Rasputin and Ernest Hemingway.
That's right, that's the West guy right here. Stephen, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to, to that about the eighth and ninth?
Yes, specifically, kind of starting from the top down, if you will, within, within eighth through 12th, there's, there's really beyond, beyond Robin Garrett and Ryan Cook moving up. We, we have one to hire in, in the World Languages Department in Spanish. We'll see Rochelle Phillips bump up a level and, and we have a really, really good person coming, coming in. His name's Johnson Mulaney, really excited about him specifically. From, from an academic perspective, I would, I would argue that the, the eighth graders through, through World, they already come over to Willis Hall Building to begin with. So I don't think there's going to be fundamentally huge shifts, let me rephrase that, there won't be fundamentally huge shifts in, in, in eighth grade movement. The, a great number of students are already coming to Willis Hall.
And Ryan and Rob are going to teach out of their classrooms in the middle school.
Correct, and, and any, any ninth through 12th graders will also gravitate over towards Eaton Hall, the, the middle school as well, back and forth. So we're, we're really excited about the changes. I, I think it's, I think it'll serve us very well as we move forward.
Do I feel lonely, do I feel lonely without a beard? I think actually, when we had our first town hall, I think I had stopped shaving for a couple of weeks. I, you guys, I, I wish I could grow a beard, I would, I, I'd do it in a heartbeat, but it's, it's not good, it's really bad. Let's see here. Yeah, somebody asked about the other independent schools in Virginia. Although I haven't for a couple of weeks, the head, the school heads in Virginia have, have met usually like as many as 50 or 60 people on, on a meeting at a time. Lately, it's been more of a, kind of a, of a, of a link that we, we, we ask questions on. Everybody is looking at these things the same way. I, I think that we're probably more optimistic that we're going to be able to do things more, more closely to normal in, in, in Roanoke than some of the schools that are up in, in, in the Northern Virginia, you know, DC area. And that just comes from having a 4% positive rate versus a 25% positive rate. So I think everybody wants to be where, where we are right now from a, from a COVID standpoint. So I, I feel like we're, we're maybe more opti, schools in the Southwest are more optimistic than, than others. So, and we're also fortunate that we've got Virginia Tech Carillion. So we've got a lab and a pretty major hospital system, you know, with Lewis Gale and Carillion. And we're, we're, we're in a good place with respect to beds and testing. And so I feel, I feel good about where we are. But everybody's looking at the same, the same statistics and the same type of ways of dealing with whatever, whatever's thrown to them. What about books? Will we go digital if we're distance learning? My guess is the books will, will probably stay similar. And what we would probably have to do is arrange some kind of drive-by pickup of books for classes and things like that, much the same way you drive by and pick up food at, at, at a restaurant. Obviously, digital books are a whole lot easier to, to do, and we, we go from there. Yeah, we did, we, we do have some folks that are, are leaving, and, and that's been sort of difficult for us as a family to, to not have the opportunity to kind of gather and to say goodbye. Certainly, Aaron Jones is retiring in the, in the, in the middle of the school. And, and many folks have, I always laugh at Aaron because of the mixed blessing. You get Aaron Jones, like, oh my God, she's so hard for my kid. And then coming out the backside, you're like, well, my kid really learned a lot of algebra, a lot of geometry. So, you know, she'll, she'll be moving on. Deborah is, is, is going to retire. Mark, of course, is, is leaving for, for our school in, in North Carolina, an assistant head position. So we do have the new Spanish teacher coming in, we do have a new gentleman coming in, in admissions, who will, will be a, an upper school admissions guy from Asheville School. So we've got a few new faces on campus, but really, it's, we're pretty much the same, same teachers that we've, we've had before. Not a lot of, not a lot of change. Opening the school with two tracks, one offering students physical daily attendance, and the other having the option of remote learning. I, I think, I mean, I think to the extent that we can do that, we will. As I said, I think for us to maintain the ability to quickly go back and forth at the drop of a hat, I think we need to maintain the distance learning aspect at the same time. We have one, I, I also agree that if, if a parent feels uncomfortable for any reason not sending their child to school, whether it's a one-day thing, or whether it's a, you know, whether it's a month-long thing or whatever, I, I want to have that parent be able to take advantage of, of distance learning. So I, I do think that there will always be the option that the kids will be able to, 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 to use distance, use distance learning for, for sure.
One of the questions that came up is about contracts. And as we know, we have a continuous contract in place. Knowing that there might be, and I, and I hate to use this overused term, but you know, we talk about in uncertain times, you know, you hear that all the time, but where there are uncertainties, I think the position has been, and you mentioned it in your last email, that if we continue to be in this uncertain time, we want to take what is normally our deadline of the end of June, where contracts become live, meaning your full tuition becomes effective on July 1st, and extend that by another month to give us and parents a little bit less pressure. And in the meantime, it gives us an opportunity to consider things like, what if we do open and it is distance learning? And it's likely that that distance learning might be for September, or perhaps for September and October, we would revisit the tuition. And again, the reason for these extensions of deadlines is we want to give people notice about what's going on and what the changes are. Do we have particular changes in mind? No, we only have possibility scenarios and modeling that we've been doing. But as it comes closer, we'll give people enough time to make decisions in a timely fashion and won't pitch them to their contracts unless we feel that those contracts ought to be binding.
Yeah, the main thing on that is, is we want to make sure that, that people are aware of what, to the extent that we can, we want to make sure people are aware of what the future holds and what our responses are going to be before we lock in, lock in contracts. I will tell you though, that the last paragraph in my letter is something that I hope folks will go back and will, will reread. You know, I, I, again, educational choices, like a lot of parenting decisions, are, are personal. And, and I, I've long always said that there are like a lot of really good ways to raise kids. And it's not the way I raised my kid, but, you know, there are some people that do it differently, and it's amazing how well it works. So you can't prescribe these things, and really, educational choice is not something that you beat somebody over the head with at a, at a cocktail party. But I, I will say that right now, if, if you've got folks that are interested in North Cross, if they've talked to you before, or if they've expressed an interest, or if they've said something like, God, I wish I could send my kid to North Cross, this is probably the time that it, it would behoove them to, to switch over. Because I do think that there are going to be lots of odd things that are going to happen next year in the way our school year lays out. And I, I am 100% convinced of our ability to negotiate those changes. And to the extent that I can lay out what those changes will look like before a contract becomes binding, we will. But I really do think that if I were a parent in the Roanoke Valley and I was concerned about my kid making progress over the next year, I would be willing to put my money where, where I will be assured of what they're, what they're going to get. And so, as I said, I do think that this is something that we're starting to see. We had somebody from Penn Forest the other day call and say, I can't do it, we're going to, we're coming over. We've had a few people that, that looked at us the last couple of years that we've reached out to that are now considering coming over. But I do feel like that is a, a, a major thing. So we can't tell you exactly what we're going to do right now. We'll do the best we can as we, before the contracts go hot. I do think that if we go to distance learning for a considerable amount of time, you know, worst-case scenario, there will be a, a, a reduction in, in tuition. And, but as I said, remember that reduction in tuition also comes with reduction in staffing. And I'm also, it's, it's my job to protect the school and to the extent that I can protect our faculty as best I can. That's something else we have to, 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 to measure and balance. But there will be some, some savings that we get from, from going distance for a long period of time. We will pass those on to, to our, to our parents. So we'll know more about that as we get closer. Let's hope we, we don't have to go to that. Just a question on the flu, that's a good idea actually to, we do offer the flu shots on our campus every year. And, and I don't know that everybody, I know that everybody isn't taking us up on it, but it is probably a good idea, particularly to prevent sort of co-infections, flu and COVID. You know, just because you have the coronavirus doesn't mean you can't also get the flu at the same time. So, yeah, that would be a double whammy. And, and I think that's probably a good, a good discussion to have as well.
And I think this year too, one of the things that we see, of course, my, my office for the past few years has been right at the sick bay of the school.
Yeah.
I think that in the past, parents have not been as cautious perhaps as they could have been about sending kids to school. And I think that's, culture is going to change a lot. So I think things like flu shots and more attentiveness to, is my, is my child sick? And should they be going to school spreading germs? I think there will be a cultural shift here, which will be welcomed.
We also have, because of the new construction, we are going to have a more elaborate nursing area. And so part of that is being able to isolate students that have fever, or develop fever during the school day, rather than having them sort of sitting out in the middle of the lobby waiting for somebody to pick up. We, we will have space now where the students can be put, and then we can sanitize that, that room after they go. So we will have the ability to isolate a little bit, a little bit as well. So that's another thing that we're talking about again, is how do we respond to somebody getting, because again, somebody's going to get the flu, and it's better off to, to do that as well, nicely. Yeah, distance learning impacting upper school science labs. Yeah, this is a, a, I mean, there are some things you can't do distance, distance-wise. And so, again, that is a major reason why we have to get kids on campus, particularly for the AP Science courses, because there are prescribed labs plus, plus bonus labs. There are prescribed labs plus, plus bonus labs that you're supposed to put into. An AP physics, chemistry, biology, even an environmental science curriculum. So. The idea of getting kids in for labs. Interestingly enough, in, in China, they teach without labs. And so it, it can be done. It, it doesn't exactly go along with sort of American educational theory. In terms of, of, you know, you learn by doing. So, but I, one of the things we do for our Chinese students is we do create. A, a lab course in the summer and it might be the kind of thing that we go, for instance, the whole year. In distance learning and we have kids in labs or in science classes that are supposed to have labs. You know, the question is, do you, do you create a lab course in the summer that, that matches the, the class that they take during the year? And that, of course, that assumes we're back next summer, which again, I don't, I assume we will be, but. Yeah, that's one of the toughest parts about distance learning is, is, is labs. I do think though, that as we. As we start to look back at what we did this past spring over the summer. One of the things that you can do is there are numerous lab simulations that you can, you can use in those classes. And so I do think that as teachers go, they might be able to find some, some lab simulations. It's. It's not the same as actually turning a Bunsen burner on and, and, and then heating something up. Then decanting something. I mean, you don't have the, the techno, the techniques. But you can, you know, have a, a virtual Bunsen burner that you put your thing on for a certain amount of time, that kind of thing. So. Try and look at some of that. Let's see. So as I said, I, we're kind of winding down here on, on, on questions. It's, it's a, it's been a, a difficult situation. I feel like there's some things that we could have done better, which we'll endeavor to improve upon. What I said in my letter is true. I, I think that the success that we've had is less. Well, I don't think, I know that the success we've had is less a top-down. Request for people to do certain things. And it's really. It's the product of a faculty that feels very responsible for the, for the education of the kids. And it, it's the faculty have done. A remarkable job of, of trying to stay focused on this. And I also think it's a parent body that has. Supported and pushed their kids to continue to focus on these things. And it's a tired school as we head towards this weekend. But we did have some virtual awards go out today and Friday or Saturday, we're going to do a drive-by. Graduation where the kids will drive by and say goodbye to their teachers.
If I can add to that, some of the, some of the lower school grades are doing, tomorrow's been postponed because it's all supposed to be Noah's Ark weather tomorrow as well. But I think, and we'll dial down on whether the Friday drive-by goodbyes can also happen. If not, those will happen Tuesday and Wednesday. And we are filming our lower school award ceremony or zooming it. We're recording the Zoom and that will be sent in. To all lower school families on Friday and also attached to cross dots. Fat pencil.
Yeah, Fat Pencil comes out, what, Saturday too, right?
Correct. And we have all. Everyone's got their stuff in. So. Sarah Sled's working on making it into a, one thing. It should be pretty, if you have tears, prepare to shed them when you watch.
Now if we can just get the, the last few seniors to do their senior speeches, Mr. Belders. So, yeah, we will actually on Saturday, even though we won't have graduation, we will have, we will drop. A, some brief remarks from me and, and remarks from Ford Kemper. So even though we're not going to have a ceremony, we will announce the, the, the seniors as graduates. So as of Saturday, they will efficiently, they will, they will, they will enter the ranks of, of North Cross. Alumni. So that will be done on Saturday as, as well. Yeah, we have, there's a global studies question. We have actually. Looked at, at that and we will adjust some of the requirements to the extent that we can. We had a number of trips that were canceled this summer that were international trips that were global studies or STEM trips, those types of things. So. We'll have to figure out some, some other options. To the extent that we can get people through with the. With the existing requirements, we will. But we do understand that there may be in some, particularly some kids that are. Like rising seniors, maybe that, that are running out of time to, to do some of the travel, things like that. We, we may have to go ahead and try to come up with some alternatives. That, that might, that might work to satisfy the requirement. Same with, same with art. The, the theater, the theater should be open. If we're on campus. It's just a question of whether we're, we're on campus. A question on summer classes available. You know, the, the, we have had discussions, again, particularly. Sort of skills-based summer classes, either mathematics classes designed to help people in the sequence of math. Or a writing, writing-based courses designed to keep people focused over the summer on their writing skills. We have, we have talked about that. Probably it would be, just so happens that our upper school directors also knows a lot about our summer program. We are looking later in the summer if we can do those things. And again, that's the big if. I think it would be very. Smart for a parent to take advantage of a math or a writing class over the summer. It's a long summer this year. I mean, it's going back to the old Memorial Day to Labor Day. Models. So it's a long summer. So, you know, a three-week class where they are, are doing some heavy algebra skills or. Geometry skills, algebra two skills or, or, or really working on a writing workshop. I think could be a very, very strong, strong thing for a child to, to be able to hit the ground running. In September when we start. So, yes, I, if we're able to do that, we will. I don't, well, I, I don't know that we will. If we can't get back together. We've even considered some distance learning options over the summer. There obviously are pros and cons to having more distance learning opportunities in the summertime for the kids. So. We haven't come to a full understanding whether we would do that or not, but if we can get back on campus, we certainly. We certainly will do some summer, summer, not remediation, but. Polishing in terms of math and, and, and writing. So a good question, good question there. So as I said, we're, we're, we're winding up the year. The campus will remain closed for the month of June. In terms of the offices. It doesn't mean that I'm not going to be here. David will be here off and on all summer. So there will be people around. If you, if you got somebody that needs to come see us. Come see us, reach out and. But I think we're pretty quiet with the construction. Eric Lawrence will be here taking care of the construction. But we'll continue to, to work towards resolving. Firm answers to be able to provide to you hopefully by the end of June. And if we can't provide firm answers, then we'll, we'll move the, move the due date for the. For the contract. We'll move it back a month to August and we'll try and get those, those questions answered, but. My one thing is. I can tell you that I'm certain that we will do a better job than anybody else. In the valley in terms of responding thoughtfully with an eye towards the education of your children. And the health of your children, much more so, we're not going to throw away three months of the school year. And so. With that, let me just thank you guys for a great spring. It's been special in a lot of ways. And it, part of the reason it's been special is because the parents have responded so wonderfully well. And for that, I. I offer you guys to thank you for, for, for the whole school, all faculty. And we shall, we shall go from there. So thank you guys again. Be smart, be safe. And let's see, hang on, I got one last question. Is my child entitled to summer class if I decide to switch schools? If your child was in ECP this, this. This spring, yes, we have a class that you'd be. We have scheduled a class, a three-hour a day class, starting the last week in July and the first three weeks in August. And yes, you would be entitled to that summer class if you were enrolled in ECP this, this spring. If you are. In not an ECP, if you're looking at some summer options, that's, that's completely, that's a, that's a different, a different thing. So. Yeah, JK four. So yeah, you would be, you'd be allowed to do that this summer. And we hope you'll take advantage of it. So. But we'd rather you return next year for kindergarten because I think we're going to do a better job than anybody else. So. Come for the summer and stay. Okay. All right. Well, thanks guys. Listen, be safe, be smart. And we will. See people as soon as we're allowed to, to get together in groups again. Thanks, guys.